Today is Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council meeting. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The time is 6:13 PM. We have recessed from executive session, and we'll move into work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited and welcome to join us. Thank you. The time is 6:15 PM. We're for the work session on the city council. We have five items on our agenda this evening. The first one is discussion of the agenda item themselves. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda or the rest of the agenda? Jim?
I was wanting to talk about the rolling oats pricing as part of the ordinance.
Okay. Which one was that?
There, G. I think it's H.
Oh, H? H. Is that Vanessa?
Good afternoon.
Hi there.
Go ahead.
So, we've had a lot of discussion about rolling oats and the whole, like, what do we do? I'd really like to wait on the pricing and being included in the ordinance, and then see a more fulsome presentation about the whole thing. Like, you know, I'd like to see where we are in perpetuity fund, or whatever it might be called, and how that was impacted by the pricing we had. I'm not sure that the non-resident pricing as proposed is enough, in my view. I'd like to see comparative pricing to kind of see how that would relate on a market basis to other facilities in the North Texas area. I'd like to see kind of where we're at on all of that, so we can maybe make a little bit better informed decision about, you know, is the pricing that we're proposing for non-residents sufficient to increase the overall percentage going forward of resident consumers of the service out there? Or are we just still so well under market on a comparative basis that it's not going to dissuade any non-residents from coming in here? And we're not going to offset the percentage at all? And just kind of hear a little bit more about the discussion about why those numbers were selected, what the comparative numbers are, and kind of... I just don't want to agree to the pricing tonight without having all that other information available, and kind of in a larger, you know, big picture presentation of this is the future of rolling oats as we kind of envision it, and these are kind of the options we have to tweak what that future looks like.
Mark?
If we approve it tonight, it's not etched in stone, right? We can always revise it. I think it's important we get something in place now to curtail any potential buyers that are not residents. And then, you know, we continue with a real robust study on that and make sure it's high enough. I'm in agreement, Jim. You know, we want to make sure it's adequate.
Don? Oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, that's my concern. I don't know that the pricing, as it's proposed, it meets that goal. I don't have anything to compare it to. And, because I do want to accomplish that goal, but, and I... I am concerned about, you know, we're going to pass an ordinance with it, and then we're going to continue to have, I'm concerned, influx of non-residents, even if the pricing is proposed, and accomplish nothing with respect to that goal, except to continue to sell off plots until we get to a point where we amend the ordinance. And I'd rather just do it all at once, even if it's at the next meeting. You know, I'd rather just get it all done, but...
I have some of the same reservations. And so if we do need to go ahead and get a fee schedule in place, can we not just... Why don't we just double up the resident price or something and shoot higher? Or sunset the fee schedule or something, where we have to come back and readdress it at some point? Because I have some of the same concern that if we put it in place, it doesn't get readdressed later until it is too late. So if we need to put something in place, make it 5,511,000 or whatever, I mean, just put something in that'll force the issue later.
And I was going to say, like, I agree with Mark that I want to do something sooner rather than later. At the same time, I do agree that if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and not have one fee today and then a different fee immediately, and make sure we do it right from the beginning. I guess my question would be, if we're going to go back and we are going to get additional information, I want to make sure that we have that information and the pricing is correct, or where it needs to be and competitive across the board. How soon can we get that? And could this be done at the next meeting? Or are we talking more meetings? Right, like, how long will this take?
So, to answer a lot of y'all's questions, the pricing that we've done, we've done an extensive pricing list as far as comparator cemeteries, as well as looking at the proposed fees and what our cost recovery goals would be compared to the market. So we've done all of that background research. That's what's taken us, obviously, this time. And when I came to you guys the last time, we kind of had those background numbers already set, looking at that. So we do have a lot of that research already done, which is why we proposed to these. And within the market, we have comparators within the market. And so there are three cemeteries that are within the 16-mile radius of us. And those prices are anywhere from $3,000 to $11,000, which is why we're like right in the market for where we're at for the in-ground plots.
For residents or non-residents?
They know, we're the only cemetery that does a resident, or a standard versus a resident price. So that is very unique to Capella.
So the comparison has one price for anybody?
No, the comparison, so they have different prices. Yes, yes, one price for anybody, but it depends on the location within their cemetery. Yep. So within those three cemeteries, it's that price gap there.
So when you say we're comparing our price, we're comparing our non-resident price to those three?
Yes, our standard rate, yeah.
The standard rate.
Yeah, the standard rate. And a lot of these, a lot of this research that we did was obviously in consultation with our consultant that we have, and the industry expert, with the market, and with those things. So we do plan to reevaluate fees, obviously, annually. And then, as you guys, as we discussed before, putting the prices in place June 1st, and then it would still be under our amended operations plans, so we wouldn't fully open to pre-need services until October 1st. At least, that's the plan. So this would be, this is our plan to give the next couple months a good trial, to see what are the rates? Are we still getting those at-need non-residents versus resident rates? And then we do have an opportunity before the October 1st to adjust those prices, should we see the need for that. Like I spoke before at the last meeting, obviously, we want to stay within market because of, due to the fact that we need the non-resident pricing, right? Like, we need that to sustain rolling oats long-term. We do not have enough residents in rolling oats that are in the city of Capella. They're choosing rolling oats as their final resting place. And so we need to make sure that we continue to keep some non-residents, which would be that standard rate, in our cemetery for that. So that's why we've really placed in that, not the highest, but not, obviously, the lowest. Like, we are quality over quantity. However, obviously, this is the city of Capella Cemetery, so we can, I can provide you guys with whatever you need to move on, and we can make adjustments as needed.
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is we are one of the 13 cities in the state of Texas owns a cemetery, correct?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Did we compare with any other city-owned cemetery?
The city of Grand Prairie, yes.
Okay. And we are talking about 300 lots out of 8,000? Or we're talking about the 1,900 we're going to develop, the prices?
Starting June 1st, it would be any plot that is sold, starting June 1st, potentially starting June 1st, is the new price increase.
So today we have a freeze, correct, selling the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we are continuing that?
Correct, as of right now, yes. So if we continued to come back at a later time, we would still continue to sell our plots for at-need services at the current rates, and not the new rates.
Well, my opinion is the difference between the 5,500 and the 7,000 wasn't a big enough separation between resident and non-resident.
It's basically what we discounted previously.
Yes.
Percentage-wise, roughly.
Jim?
And I agree with that, and I, it seems to me that... But I also hear what you're saying about that there is a certain need for a certain volume of non-resident purchases. But I'd like to have a better understanding of why. Is that because we haven't banked enough for the perpetuity fund and that sort of thing, based upon the sales at the, you know, the pricing that's been in place? Or is there some other reason? Is it inflation? You know, I'd like to have a better understanding of that. And, you know, to a large extent, it seems to me that if I was to make a mistake, I would rather err on the side of charging non-residents too much and then moving down over time until we kind of hit that sweet spot where we're getting enough non-resident sales, but we're getting the most possible for them based upon a market test. I'd rather do it that way.
Yeah, and to answer your question, when we opened Phase... To answer your first question, when we opened Phase 2, our price point was so low that residents and non-residents were just buying up a lot of the properties. So we did not increase our bottom-line revenue enough to completely sustain us throughout. So that's why with the new fee increases, we based everything on the resident reduction, the resident reduced rate, as far as cost recovery, and then anything over that, obviously, is extra revenue for the cemetery.
Got it. Yeah. Don?
Remind me what the rates were previously to compare them? Like, 5,500 for Capella is the new one?
Yes, and it was 2,000 for Capella residents, and then 2,500 for non-residents.
And that's not the 7,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? What was the resident price before?
The price as currently so, the previous, is 2,000 for resident, 2,500 for non-resident, which is the lowest in the market.
So for residents, it's going up from 2,000 to...
5,500.
That's a huge jump.
And that's all cost-recovery-based, as well as the market research-based. So like I said, we are, I mean, the three comparable cemeteries around us start at 3,000 minimum. And that is for a small cemetery that has no amenities, no irrigation, or anything like that, is that $3,000 spot. So we are well, well below the market.
I'm sure we're going to get some questions, so kindly leave some comments.
Absolutely, yep.
Huge increase for our residents.
What do we want to do? Want to hear it tonight, or, I mean, Sherry's saying she's got the information. I think the research has been done.
Yeah, yeah. I'd still rather go to a higher for non-resident. And we're trying to do it now to avoid kind of further bleeding. I mean, I understand that, and I, you know, I appreciate the effort. I would just rather jack it up even more for the non-resident, just to make sure that we don't miss revenue that would otherwise be there.
Why don't you pull it from the agenda and then make a motion to, like, 10,000, something like that?
I'd be happy with that.
Brianna?
Jim, can I ask you a question? Do you want that number to be higher, or do you want the residents to be lower? Because the, because that's the other thing, right? There's a huge increase between for residents now. So are you good with where the residents are, and then just raising and creating a bigger gap?
I am good with where the residents are, based upon what's been represented about the cost recovery.
Right.
And being at that level. So from what I, from what I've seen, what I'm hearing is, we've been losing money every plot we've sold.
Absolutely.
Right. And so we've got a, with a perpetuity commitment with a cemetery, we have to recapture that. We have to get ahead of that again, for the benefit of everyone that's there, and all the families, and whose loved ones are there now, and all the ones to come. So, you know, but I... Well, I think it's important we have a cost recovery level, and I think we should monitor that for residents going forward, so we don't continue to lose money on sales. I also think that I would rather go high on the non-residents initially. If for anything, just to give the residents a chance to catch up and to increase that percentage of residents versus non-residents with respect to what we have left in the expansion.
Kevin and Bijay?
To Jim's point that he just said, I know we had talked about the balance of residents versus non-residents in there. And if we talk about this on this, I apologize. But like, what is the mechanism for making sure that the residents have enough spaces, if you will, and stuff? Do we have a mechanism, or is it just market pricing will, you know, the standard versus the resident is going to determine who fills it out? What does that look like?
So two ways. So one is the market pricing, right? If we have a lower price for Capella residents, it deters those non-residents that are just looking for cost, a cheaper cost, from rolling oats, because then they can go to some of the cemeteries in Louisville that might be a little bit cheaper than us. The other piece of that is, right now, we do have a pretty extensive waitlist that I spoke about last time. And so contacting all of those residents first on that, to make sure that anybody who is currently on that waiting list is getting those spaces first, so we can make sure that there is reservations for them.
So would it be, just so I understand, so would it be contact residents first, get the waiting list kind of cleared out, if you will, and then at that point, monitor what the market does? Is that the strategy?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't know if there was going to be an ongoing ratio or anything that, like, you were... So, okay.
We don't have that planned at this time, no.
Well, you know, I know we had spoken about getting some sort of, like, six-month or annual report or something like that.
Yes.
I would love for that monitoring of that ratio to be, you know, to be reported to us.
Yeah, absolutely. And we plan on doing at least costs and fees annually anyways, so that would, could be a part of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bijay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ken, I'm going back to the email response that you had. I'm going to read what you wrote, and can you explain to us? It says, "We do not need the revenue and the business of non-residents to sustain cemetery operations long-term at R O N C."
We do not need?
Yeah, my understanding was through the resident rate...
Yes, yes.
To the resident rate of 5,500, you eventually plan to be revenue or revenue-cost neutral. So...
Correct.
The non-resident would be gravy.
Yes, exactly, 100%. Yeah, that confused me with the "we do not need," because we definitely need.
Right, so is that the right... So is that based on what we have today? Because today, we have 25% residents and 75% outside.
These, this is based on the potential sales. So our past history of sales and kind of what we have on the waitlist is what we're basing all of our costs, our potential cost recovery revenue and projected revenue on.
So my question would be, based on all the analysis you have done, can we do 50/50? If it's 50% residents and 50% outside, can we still sustain?
Yes.
Without taxpayers' money going into the operations?
Correct. With the fees that we have proposed, it is a 50/50 split, because that's been kind of our current sales for the past two years. And so that's what we've based our numbers on.
So how long will it take, or how many lots we need to sell to bring it down to 50%?
For residents overall into the cemetery?
Right, because that's the structure you have today, right? The analysis says 50/50 will carry.
For sales, not for plot ownership.
Ah.
Yes. Plot ownership, I don't, to be honest, I don't know that we'll ever get to 50/50, because the percentage is so spread apart that if we continue selling, we might up the resident increase a little bit, but there's always going to be a variance there.
So today, we are spending, what, $2 million for the operations?
Yep.
Once this is implemented, how much will it take?
So we're looking at, roughly, our operational cost is about 1.7 every year. And with these, we're looking at about like a 2.2, if all of our numbers, obviously, projected revenue. So we're looking at a net revenue of around $420,000 in year one.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question, I don't know if this is for Vanessa or somebody else, but the 1.8 million, what you just said, the operating expenses, 1.8 million or 2 million or something like that, 1.8?
Yep.
That's what it costs, or that's what we are having to subsidize the...
That's what our annual operating budget is set at every year.
Okay, and is it all covered by existing fees and the... Is it self-perpetuating, or is it actually needing? Is it actually funded out of...
It's not funded out of the general fund.
Not out of the general fund?
The rolling oats is a somewhat separate fund.
And there's no transfers or anything going over to that fund?
Correct. There's no transfers going over from the general fund into the cemetery.
Okay, so at the moment, it's self-sustaining?
It's self-staying at the moment, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just not enough to do the perpetuity?
Yeah. And one other, I guess, comment in general, this has been, there have been some challenges around all of this discussion. And it will be helpful to me just if, as we go, just having more and more data and sort of how you got to whatever conclusions you came to, maybe more so than what we usually would do, just because it has been a challenging situation to try to get our arms around exactly how it works and how this gets funded, and, you know, what has happened in the past and what do we need to move it to. It will be helpful. Any over-explanation, as if I'm not very smart, would be helpful.
Okay.
As we move forward.
And that is the plan moving forward as far as operations? So I apologize for not doing that for this case.
And typically, I know this would not be our, we would, this would not be our plan. We would stay, sort of stay at it. It's just been, there's enough challenges here, I think. Any additional information will be helpful.
Got it. Thanks. So, this is consent agenda. Are you planning to pull this off consent and make a motion?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So we can, you know, we'll go through the debate out there, discussion. And, you know, you're well, you're, each one of you is able to amend the motion, should you see fit. So just because Jim makes the motion, I mean, you can come in and ask for an amendment, so...
I'm going to throw a bunch of amendments on, so you have to keep up with them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I may advocate... All right, any other, any other questions or comments on the agenda tonight? All right, so item B is discussion, by the way, my As and Bs are probably different than yours. So the next agenda item is discussion regarding council committee liaison assignments. Did everybody get the list from Crystal or whoever sent it out? I got to admit, thank you very much. It worked out very smoothly this time. So when I, everybody got their first choice? Most everybody, if you got a second choice, it was because it was your second choice. So it worked smoothly. Except for Jim.
Why?
He gave me two first choices.
Oh, wow.
You wanted to make sure you got it.
I thought we were supposed to put, like, priority or what we wanted.
I think next year, what we're going to do, we're going to, Brianna's done it for the last several years, and it doesn't really impact anything, is to put your first three choices or first five choices or something like that. And that's what she, because by the time it gets down to seven or eight or nine, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really matter, so...
You've got to figure out a way how to describe all this so that some Texas trial lawyer can understand.
I'm doing it so they don't understand.
That was on me, big guy.
All right. Next item is discussion regarding service organization. I believe Jessica is going to handle that one. We do have a presentation this afternoon from Metro Crest. And we've got a couple of new requests as well, so...
So, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. They're handing out the printed material that was sent to you, but that is also a printed copy, in case you wanted that as well.
Wait, do we have a next one?
We do.
We do.
Printed 10, so... My name's Jessica Mendez, Budget Manager and Strategic Financial Engagement. And I'm here this evening to provide you the list of applicants for the city's annual special funding process for service and arts organizations. These grant-support organizations that meet critical service needs, promote arts and culture, or offer special programs that benefit Capella residents. The purpose of this agenda item is threefold. First is to provide an overview of the service organizations that submitted for applications for fiscal year 2026 funding. Second, to identify which organizations meet the criteria to make a presentation to you at the July Budget Workshop, based on the guidelines established by the council in the memo dated August 30th, 2016, and updated last year, April 23, 2024. And third, to seek your direction on whether to add or remove any of these organizations from the list of qualifying presenters. The memo and supporting documents are included in your council packet, and we've already passed it around as well. This year's application period was open from April 1st to April 28th, and we received a total of 19 applicants. From that 19 applications, 12 organizations are eligible for funding under the general fund, Mayor's Council budget, and seven organizations qualify for funding under hotel occupancy tax, HOT fund. In your packets, you'll find the two lists. You'll see two spreadsheets. So one will list out all the general fund qualifying applicants, and one for the HOT funding. To walk you a little bit through that spreadsheet, both spreadsheets include the name of the organization, amount of the request, a column denoting the percentage change from prior year, as well as a notes column. In the notes column, you'll find when the organization last made a presentation, the total dollar increase or decrease, as well as any other relevant notes. So of these five organizations, meet the criteria requiring them to make a presentation to you at the Budget Workshop. Per council's April 2024 guidelines, presentations are required for new applicants, and also organizations that are requesting more than 20,000, but also... and also organizations that are requesting more than twenty thousand, but also an increase of over fifty percent of prior year's allocation. The memo identifies organizations recommended to make a presentation to you at, at the workshop. Among them is also Metrocrest Services, which is listed with a funding request exceeding twenty thousand, but falling just under fifty percent. We decided to include that, um, because it's so close to the threshold of fifty percent. However, um, based on the guidelines, they technically don't qualify to percent, but they're very close, so we included them as a recommended presenter. Uh, the remaining organizations are also eligible for funding that are not listed as recommended presenters, but they are, don't fall under the criteria to make a presentation. So tonight, really, we are just seeking direction on whether to proceed with the recommended list of presenters or make any adjustments to this list, and at this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, who are the recommended presenters? Are they the ones colored in the, on the spreadsheet?
It is actually, if you look at the memo, it's probably the fir- the top part, the council memo. So the list is Carson Village, which is a new, uh, organization. Capel High School Band Booster Club is also a new, and we say new, but actually they applied in twenty fifteen, but it's been ten years since they applied, so we considered them as a new applicant. Then also Denton County My Health, My, My Resources, it's a new applicant, and the fourth is Capel Historical Museum, which is requesting over twenty thousand with an increase of more than fifty percent. And the fifth one is Metrocrest Services, I'm basically.
So, one of the, Dom?
Uh, well, I was, I don't know what you were gonna say, I was just gonna say, I'm okay with the list, except Metrocrest is talking to us tonight, right? They won't come back for budget, will they?
As how, do you prefer, if you wanted?
I guess, I'm assuming Tracy's gonna put his request in tonight, so I would say he does not need to repeat his request later.
I think that's a smart move.
So that would be the other three, I'm okay with the other four.
All of them are on the list.
Just one of the little caveats, uh, Woven Health Clinic, uh, did not meet the, the deadline.
Yes.
But they got added, I mean, they missed it by a couple of days, but they got added anyway, so just in full disclosure.
Mayor? Yes. Uh, Jessica, tha- thanks for the presentation. For my benefit, can you, uh, describe the difference between the agencies that are eligible for HOT funding versus not? What's the criteria for differentiation?
The, uh, organizations that are qualified for HOT funding, there are specific, uh, qualifications, such as typically those organizations that qualify for HOT will be arts for the promotion of tourism, it's really, like, we call it in short, that drives tourism heads and beds, for just a, a short, uh, description of that, but really, so you'll see a lot of the, the ones that qualify for HOT will be arts, uh, arts organizations are the ones, and there's also historical one.
Uh, would, would the, uh, Band Booster be, will, will it qualify for HOT funding?
Um, confirming with the information we have, we don't see that it qualifies. Um, however, we haven't, we are definitely more than happy to bring them in, and then we can kind of assess if they qualify, but based on just kind of immediate criteria, we don't see that they qualify for HOT funding.
This is a, a travel expense for them, and it's not really to bring entertainment into the city. So that's probably the reason. Bijou?
Um, I'm looking at the list here, Capel Historical Museum, it shows hundred and sixty percent increase in ask?
Yes. Last year, um, they actually, their, the amount, the amount that they requested last year, I don't have the exact amount, but I believe is about one hundred and seventeen thousand. Later on in the period, uh, they reduced their request to fifty thousand, so comparing it from fifty to one hundred and thirty, it's about a hundred and sixty percent increase.
Are they gonna have a presentation for us, or?
They are on the list of the recommended presenters, but, um, if you're wanting them to come in, we can definitely keep them in that list. If not, we can remove them as you, you wish, yeah.
I'd like to hear what's the increase.
We will keep them in the list.
Jim? Or, I'm sorry, I think Kevin was actually first.
Um, okay, uh, so I have a question, so, um, the Capel Chamber of Commerce, uh, even though that they are, they are not asking for additional funding, I'm just gonna propose this to the council, they do have new leadership, and they do have, uh, they do have a new president and CEO, uh, so I would be, actually be interested to have the new president and CEO come and just kind of share a little bit, I know it would, it would add another presentation, but I think it would be beneficial for not only ourselves, but the community to hear from her, uh, kind of, maybe see a little bit about her vision and what she's gonna do, so I would propose that we have a listen to her.
I'm okay with that.
You guys okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Jim?
Uh, Jessica, I mean to put you on the spot, and I apologize in advance, what, what, what's the total amount of HOT that we project to collect for twenty-five, twenty-six?
For twenty-five, twenty-six, we have that amount, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are, our total revenues, I have it, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand eighty-seven, that we're projecting for fiscal year twenty-six.
So there's roughly thirty percent?
Correct, yes.
Of the total we project to collect? What, okay, that's good, thank you.
Are we, we're not approving this today, are we?
No. No, we're really just asking who you want to have come in and talk.
I'm good with the presenters plus one.
Plus the chamber?
Plus the.
So we've got Carson's Village, Chamber of Commerce, Capel High Boosters Club, Denton County, My Health, My Resources, Metrocrest, ser- well, not Metrocrest Services.
I don't want to hear from them.
Yeah, and then Capel, um, Historical Museum, and I left one off. No, that's it.
I think that's all.
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much, yes.
Alright, thank you very much, we're back to you. Okay, next item is a DART Silverline update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Aaron Tate, I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works Engineering, and I have a presentation on DART items relating to the Silverline Regional Rail Project. I'll start with a brief update on the project. DART is currently finishing their segmented testing. On the slide here is one of DART's graphics showing Capel's within their testing segment A two. As DART is finishing their segmented testing, they are preparing to begin end-to-end testing, where they will run test trains from Plano all the way into DFW Airport and back. DART is, uh, anticipating revenue service to begin in late twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six. This slide summarizes three upcoming DART items for council action that I will be presenting information on. Only one of these DART items is on tonight's council agenda. The other two will be on upcoming council agendas, and we're anticipating the next June council meeting for those. Uh, the one agenda item for council action this evening is a resolution for amendment to the Interlocal Agreement, or ILA. The second upcoming DART item will be a speed limit ordinance for trains through Capel, and the third upcoming DART item will be a resolution to support construction of the Cotton Belt Regional Trail. The resolution for the First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement is the only DART agenda item for council action this evening. Since the approval of the original Interlocal Agreement, the enhancements included in this agreement have been discussed previously with City Council and approved in concept with estimated costs. Funds were designated in the general fund fund balance for this purpose. The First Amendment includes the following enhancements: additional quiet zone crossings at Royal Lane and Freeport Parkway. Uh, the crossing equipment has already been constructed at those places. Um, the next item is Beltline Road Bridge and Retaining Wall enhancements, and those have been completed as well. And the third item in this ILA amendment is enhanced fencing, specifically black-coated chain link with Mo strip, and that installation is currently in progress. Fiscal impact of this First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement is one million, eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars from assigned fund balance of the general fund. A future DART agenda item will be a speed limit ordinance for trains through Capel. This ordinance will require passenger trains to have a slower maximum operating speed through street crossings in the residential and business core of Capel, as shown in the table on the below left. In addition, this ordinance will still require freight trains to maintain a maximum operating speed of no more than twenty miles per hour throughout Capel. And we anticipate bringing this item before council in June. Uh, and another future DART agenda item will be a resolution to support construction of one point five miles of the Cotton Belt Regional Trail that passes through Capel. For context, this is an overall map of the master plan for the fifty-seven mile Cotton Belt Regional Trail planned route, which will eventually extend from Fort Worth to Plano. The blue box on the map highlights the Capel section of the Phase Three of the Cotton Belt Regional Trail, which DART and NCT COG are currently securing funding for construction. And here's some more detail, this slide shows the Phase Three A sections of the Cotton Belt Regional Trail that are currently being secured for funding for construction. The Capel section of the Phase Three A is indicated by the blue rectangle. The west end of the Capel section of the trail will start at South Capel Road on the southeast side of Old Town, then go along southwestern Boulevard and East Beltline Road before crossing into the city of Dallas to connect to the New Cypress Waters DART station. Then the trail will continue east to cross back into Capel at the Moore Road intersection with East Beltline Road, and the trail will pass through Grapevine Creek Park to connect to the Campion Trail system at the Mockingbird Lane intersection with East Beltline Road. The local match from the city of Capel for funding of construction of this Phase Three of the trail is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The remaining funding for Phase Three A is planned to come from federal and regional funding sources, including the TechStop twenty-twenty-five transportation alternatives call for projects. Thank you for your time, does anyone have any questions?
Jim?
So on the interlocal, as I understand it, the, the, you didn't mention the stain, the acrylic stain, or?
Uh, that's part of the Beltline Road Bridge and Retainable Enhancements, that includes the stain, the city logo on the bridge cap, um, the rustications on the columns, that's all wrapped into
Okay.
that one bullet there.
Okay, thank you. Um, so these are all things that we already committed to?
Correct, yes.
We just haven't paid for yet.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so, so we're, we're writing the check that?
Somebody else agreed to.
Well, it's, I mean, it's fine, I liked a lot of the, I liked, most of those are aesthetic improvements, and I agreed with them at the time, uh, even though I was a, a citizen, I had no vote, but, um.
Oh, yeah, you had a vote.
Well, yeah, fair enough, but, uh, but I, I think, okay, so I just wanna make sure, so these are all things that are basically done. And then could you go to the one with the map with the trail on it, please?
The detailed map?
Oh, oh, real quick, go back to that last one, the speed limits. So, on the speed limits, do we have discretion as to those speed limits for the passenger train? Or is that also baked into the interlocal?
Uh, it is separate from the interlocal, it has gone through a number of reviews, including DART's design team, uh, coming up with speed limits that work with their commuter rail, so, um, they have actually responded to our comments, so the line item, Capel Road, that used to be fifty-five miles per hour in their original design, but due to previous, uh, council comments, uh, they've redone their design, it's now twenty-five miles per hour, um, but their, time is not on our side for trying to make any changes to this.
So, with respect to an operating speed in a specific intersection, what is understood with respect to when do they, like, it's southwestern, or, Capel Road's a good one. At what point, before they hit the intersection, do they have to be at twenty-five miles per hour? And, and how long do they have to go through the intersection before they can get back up to fifty-five miles per hour?
The, the ordinance is written so that those are when the train enters the crossing, so DART will need to look at their train acceleration and deceleration rates, but per the ordinance, they have to be at those speeds as they cross through.
So the, the, the front nose of the train hits Capel Road, it's gotta be going twenty-five miles per hour?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you, and then on the next slide?
And, hey, Jim?
Oh.
Let's, did Mr. Transportation have something to say on that one?
That one, uh, well, I was gonna just ask, are these, are the cows out of the barn already, and these are baked, already baked in, these speed limits?
Uh, these have been?
I guess I would have concerned about that one at MacArthur, it's fifty miles an hour at MacArthur, it seems awfully fast at MacArthur, but I, I didn't know if there was any, I, I would have thought maybe Fairway was.
So, these, these are the max design speeds, so not necessarily the speed that they're going, so they designed it at the max speeds, so that's what, that's what these speeds are, is, is, the operating speeds, but it's based off the max design, so fifty miles an hour may be the max that it could go, and you're not going to have to do.
But just, uh, the only reason I had, that's, that intersection, I would anticipate problems at that speed, but if it's.
So Jim, just, they're not gonna be accelerating and decelerating every time they go through a crossing? That, they're, they're much too, too massive to be doing that, so they'll be, if you look, they'll be slowing down as they pass through South MacArthur, and then basically staying at a fairly constant speed till they hit the west side of town at Freeport, and then they'll start accelerating again.
Yeah, okay, can I go to my next one?
What's that?
Can I go to my next question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, now the next one, where, where the trail is, there you go, that one. So what is the, you've got the two bright green trails that are Phase Three A, and then you've got the squiggly line that appears to be north of Beltline, but is that going up? It's hard to tell, is that, what is that road that it's, when it says Mockingbird Lane? So where, where is that trail going, the squiggly line, the, it says trail to be funded by other sources? That's in Capel, right?
Uh, so the, thank you, Jim, so that, that segment that crosses from Capel into Carrollton is, uh, has not been designed yet, um, so that is a segment of trail that had originally in concept was thought would follow the Cotton Belt Corridor across the Elm Fort Flood Plain, but it turns out the Elm Fort Flood Plain was too, uh, restrictive in their, uh, design. It would be too expensive to follow the Cotton Belt through that corridor, so this yellow, uh, green dotted alignment is something that they are working on design, uh, I believe Dallas County is leading that design effort, but that section of trail, it will be a trail at some point, but it has not been designed and is not part of this Phase Three construction funding effort.
But where does that dump out from Carrollton into Capel, though? Where, it looks like we're building that straight through the neighborhood, is that river change?
Uh.
That shows it as Starleaf, but that, that alignment is also not set, that was the recommended alignment that they provided, and we've had conversations with them that that's probably not gonna be the final alignment. So that's, that portion is just schematic in nature right now, um, as they're trying to, uh, go for funding for that, but that, that, that alignment is not set, we've, we've talked about other options for that alignment.
Okay, thanks, fine, and, I mean, is, why don't they just continue along the rail like they're doing the rest of it?
Um, the Elm Fort Flood Plain is a big, a big, uh, cost barrier there, um, they would have to put a lot of the, a lot of the trail up on elevated boardwalk, which is cost prohibitive.
Well, that would be lovely. Okay, okay, well, thank you very much, I've caused them problems.
Bijou? Yeah, can you go back to the previous screen, um, the one million dollar? So this one million dollar is pending, then check we have to write to the DART, correct?
Correct, so previously, my understanding was we had council agreed in twenty twenty-one to fund one million fifty-three thousand, um, that included an item for Beltline median landscaping that we ended up taking care of with our project, so this is just one million, eight thousand.
So as of today, do you know the total number of how much we spend on DART projects? This is it?
Correct.
Nothing, we haven't spent, yeah, this, this was approved originally, but we have not spent any, they haven't asked for reimbursement yet. They will after this is approved. They will after this is, they, the project's finished.
Tracy, I have a question for you. I'm gonna dig back in the memory banks when I first got on the council four years ago. There was a discussion about like a bridge design, like on, on Beltline, like some sort of like, is that? You were the one that gave the presentation, that's why I'm asking, but I'll ask.
It was discussed, but we got direction not to move forward with those improvements.
Okay, I, that was just, I cannot remember from that long ago, so I was kind of wondering where that landed.
We picked the middle, we picked the middle one or something?
Right, and that's, that's the, the, the bridge enhancements that are in, in this agenda item.
Okay, so.
So the painting, the logo.
So that's all we did, but?
Yeah, we also had landscaping, but as Aaron mentioned, we, we handled that as part of the Beltline project.
But the Beltline Bridge, it's not gonna have an additional piece?
It's not gonna be attached pathway?
Yeah.
That would have been with the rail, elevated rail bridge itself?
It was more like a, some kind of side design that went on, like, so we, I'm, I'm just trying to remember from that long ago, so.
We did show like a Cadillac version that.
We did agree that we weren't gonna do the Cadillac, I remember that.
It more closely matched the bridge design that we have today. It was gonna be much more costly than what was.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I, I was just wondering where that piece had gone, so just thank you for jogging the memory, I appreciate it, so.
Any other questions for Aaron? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. I hope everybody was paying attention to the Capel Facebook page where former mayor Mark Wolf was providing some very useful history to this. I found it very interesting, there were things in there I did not know. All right, next is a Verdantity presentation with Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have the pleasure of introducing Kevin Shepherd. He is the founder and CEO of Verdantity, and so tonight he, we, we've hired Verdantity to do a land use fiscal analysis for us ahead of the comp plan update that will take place later this year, or that will get started later this year. So Kevin's gonna give us kind of an overview of the process tonight, introduce to us what he'll be doing, and so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, it's, good to be with y'all this evening. All I want to do, there we go, we're good. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of what a land use fiscal analysis is and some of the information that's gonna come out of it, and then I always like, early on in the process, to have an answer or an opportunity to get some initial questions and feedback from, from council before we dive into all of the math and the maps and the, and the data. So as many mentioned, I'm founder, Kevin Shepherd, founder and CEO of Verdantity. I'm a civil engineer by degree. I actually did some civil engineering work with, with Mike here in Capel in the very early years of Verdantity, I think it was maybe twenty thirteen-ish. But we are a Texas-based planning and engineering firm focused on cultivating financially strong and resilient communities. This purpose goes back to when I was an engineer. I used to work at HDR and then got into the National Director of Community Planning Practice. So I went from the world of designing things where we're taught growth is good and build, 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 into a world of kind of a hodgepodge, planners, architects, economists, landscape architects, all different groups of people. But as I was working around the country, this would have been two thousand nine to twenty eleven when I left, as I was working around the country, what I started to find is, in most places, not everywhere, big cities, small city, rural, urban, suburban, very few cities have the money that they needed to maintain services and infrastructure. And so I was started to ask, well, what are we doing in Texas that's gonna keep us from ending up like in Memphis or a street border, some of these other places? And the answer is not a whole lot, we're actually doing it very, you know, more aggressively and bigger, but in the last few years, going, twenty sixteen, we started to get into more planning work with this fiscal analysis element of, I wanted to be able to connect real data on property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, infrastructure costs, housing costs, with our development pattern. Because what I've found in those last few years on the planning side is the way that we're building our places, where, when, how fast development happens, is directly related to a city's budget and their long-term fiscal health. What we've seen, say nineteen fifty to, to now, across this country is a, a pretty aggressive growth of, of the suburban, let's call it the suburban development pattern, you know, auto-centric, larger lots, more spread out. And doing that, we haven't really been thinking about, fully about the long-term fiscal impacts of some of those, some of those decisions. And what land use fiscal analysis basically is, is looking at maps, looking at charts, looking at graphs, that we can dive into, the staff can dive into, that y'all can dive into, that helps you understand the fiscal productivity of different development patterns, lot sizes, home sizes, home values, property tax rates, all that good stuff. It gives you real hard data that you can then use to make more informed decisions on land use, growth management, infrastructure, economic development, all kinds of different investments. In most places that we work, they are extremely upside down financially when you factor in long-term infrastructure costs especially. So far, we're early in the process, we're about a third of the way through with you, maybe getting close to halfway. Capel's not in the situation that most places are. You guys are in a pretty financially strong place right now. Has a lot to do with your sales tax base and what you've been doing to move some of that sales tax money into infrastructure funding over the years. But I always just encourage everyone to, don't kind of rest on your laurels. And some of the conversation that you were having earlier in the first agenda item about cost of service and what you needed, it's a very similar philosophy for infrastructure, for parks, for facilities. Don't just think about what they cost to maintain today, think about what it's gonna cost down the road when you actually have to put more extensive maintenance into them, or to some extent, you may have to fully rebuild things. Many mentioned that this is kind of a precursor to a comp plan update. These are some of the questions, just a few that we like to ask when, when we're working on comprehensive plans, and a couple that I think are relevant to, to you all to begin to think about. The first one, I think we all know that, that there's rapid population and business growth in the North Texas region. That's not going away anytime soon. We're gonna continue to grow, there's a lot of people moving here for a lot of different reasons. A lot of businesses want to come here for a lot of reasons. That can be a huge opportunity, or in some places, it could be a concern for Capel, I think it's an opportunity. Second one, rising land and construction costs and limiting housing supply in the region are driving housing prices up. This is, the reason this relates to Capel is, is that second kind of question in blue, how much are you all concerned about housing attainability and workforce housing in Capel? Maybe you're not, maybe you are, it's not my position to say that, but what we're gonna show you is some data that helps inform that conversation. That is a segue into the third one. Demographic preferences for housing and lifestyle are changing. What, those of us that are, you know, the Gen Xers, boomers that have kids, or maybe even some grandkids now, what we enjoyed, what we looked for in our life, what we wanted in the neighborhoods we were at, is not necess, or that we chose to move to, is not necessarily the same thing that folks in the future are looking for. Something to keep in mind. There's always gonna be that segment of folks, but how many of them are gonna be out there and are gonna be able to afford to live in, in Capel in the future? And then the last one gets more into the, the land use fiscal analysis itself, and that's the facility and infrastructure costs for growing or aging communities built. I don't wanna, I never want to say built out, no community's ever truly built out. But for more mature communities, those costs are shifting from preventative maintenance to more expensive maintenance and replacement. We focus mostly on streets and water and sewer infrastructure, but I've got a colleague or a friend that works for a similar company, a hundred and ten percent, that does a lot of parks and rec consulting, and the, the same challenges are present in the parks and rec field as well. So the question there is, does the city have the resources that needs to continue providing high-quality services, facilities, and infrastructure that Capel residents have come to expect? Capel is a very high-quality place, people move here for a reason, and just want to make sure that you all have the resources to maintain that in the future. Again, a lot of places do not. We show the numbers to prove that. We're not quite all the way through with, with you all, but feel like you guys are in a much, much better position than most. Couple of initial observations for our team, these are not fully vetted with staff yet, so I'll take full ownership, this is our team and some of the things that we're seeing, that again, put these out there for, for some feedback. First, Capel's financially strong, but maybe vulnerable. You guys have one of the highest revenue per household levels in the, in the entire metroplex and probably across the entire country, and we've done close to three hundred of these now. Here, when you take your general fund revenue or all, all of your revenue together, you divide that by the household, the, the per household revenue is off the charts. Second thing there, significant portion, and this is where some of the vulnerability comes in, significant portion of your revenues comes from distribution, sales tax. That could be perceived as, you know, if you're thinking about anti-fragile, if you're thinking about a resilient pattern, I always like to say, property tax with, with all the things that, that we can go into with that, it is a more predictable and more sustainable revenue stream. That's one that, that you all have a little more control over. Sales tax can be volatile, and especially related to distribution stuff. We'll see where legislate, where legislation goes this time or next one, but there's a potential that that could go away quickly, and it just goes poof. So a lot of what we like to ask is just what if? What if certain things were happening, and what, you know, how are you guys thinking about these different what-if scenarios? The flip side of that is, the more sales tax revenue you have, the less pressure that takes off of your property tax and gives you all some, you know, some more flexibility there. But a healthy balance of those two and some other revenue streams is, helps you be a little more, a little more resilient. The third one here, and this is important, as you think about your comprehensive plan going forward, you have limited land available to generate your needed revenue. So I mentioned Capel's a high-quality place, reducing services is likely not an option if you don't have, you know, if you don't have the revenue that you need. Some places will choose to, we're gonna scale back services, we're gonna, we're gonna push off maintaining or replacing roads, we're not going to have as many staff to maintain a park. That's a very real scenario in most of the places that, that we work in, unfortunately. But in your case, I don't think reducing services is an option for your, for your residents, so it's gonna be more of a conversation of where can you capture additional revenue? How can you increase that value per acre? This map on the right, that was kind of the segue to the next slide, but this was kind of interesting to us of just, we like to just explore the population in the city and around it. You see Capel there in the middle, it's, you know, forty, forty-two thousand, it's, upwards, it's more, it's higher than that today, but you see those like huge numbers of people to your south and to your north, you know, three-quarters of a million to the south, another quarter million to the north, that's not even counting anything to the northeast, right? So you could look at this and say, you know, Capel's not a bedroom community on the far north side of the, the metroplex, you're actually the center of activity of two huge population bases, and you're about to have a train station and a, and a transit line go right through. Just an opportunity to think about what kind of identity does Capel want to have in the future. Building on this, this was really enlightening to me personally. You have, and this is twenty twenty-two data, we're looking to, we're working to get some updated stuff here, but you had forty thousand, twenty twenty-two, you had forty thousand people that were employed in Capel but lived somewhere else, meaning they're coming to jobs in Capel. You had eighteen thousand that lived in Capel and went outside. So you actually have more people commuting into work in Capel than you have commuting out.
I'm surprised.
I blew, blew my, and you only, back in twenty-two, had one thousand three hundred sixty-nine people that lived and worked in Capel. Just something to, to think about, and so that's the next bullet here. This reveals kind of a, a housing and jobs mismatch, right? You don't have the housing for the kind of jobs that you have in Capel, and you don't have the jobs that match the people that are living in Capel. And where I personally think this really matters for, for communities of the future, when you think about what makes a resilient place where people are gonna stick around, where businesses are gonna stick around and reinvest, there's a lot of people moving around. We live in a place, we use those services, kids go off to school, kids graduate, and they're like, oh, we're gonna move somewhere else, right? Business is the same thing. We come to a community, we're there for a little bit, and then we're out, we move on somewhere else. Very few people are spending enough time in Capel to connect with the community as both a resident and an employee, which limits their potential, which limits their interest, their, their, and the potential to cultivate what we call a self-sustaining local economy, and what is becoming more and more important is that authentic civic identity. How is Capel different than, than other places? And is, or are the differentiators that you've had to this point gonna still continue as you think for, for the next twenty or thirty years of Capel? Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. Again, we're gonna shine a light on some of this data that just gives you another data point to think about. This is some of the analysis that we'll get into more in the, in the full report, and I, I think many, we're July, sometime in July, I'm coming back to present results, right? Hopefully I have a little bit more time on that one day. But this is the kind of stuff we want to do to, to just get people thinking. So everybody here familiar with Cypress Waters, right? We think it's a useful comparison, not as, as the slide says, not because we think you should copy it, but because it does have some numbers that illustrate what a more efficient development pattern looks like. So they have, at buildout of Cypress Waters, they're gonna have a little, little more than half of the population of Capel. A tenth of the area, of the land area. This slide says a half, I think I corrected this after I sent the one to, to many, but nine hundred and sixty acres in Cypress Waters and over almost seven thousand for Capel. Double the taxable value per acre, and, and eighth of the infrastructure per resident. So it's a much more compact, much more productive development pattern in terms of the amount of people, the amount of revenue, the amount of taxable value, and then spreading whatever it has, less infrastructure, because it's a smaller footprint, but then you have more people and more households, so you spread that cost out over even more. Here's another way we like to visualize this, just to think about it, is think about that infrastructure burden per person, right? Capel, forty-two thousand people, roughly two hundred and twenty-four miles of road over that, a little less than seven thousand acres, and then you compare that to the twenty-eight thousand, it's a really tiny area there, the twenty-eight thousand people, the twenty-nine miles of road. Again, that cost per person, cost per household. The takeaway here, and we see this in a lot of places, is the more dense you are, you're gonna be able to distribute that cost across more households and more people. So there's always a trade-off, the more spread out you are, you have more infrastructure, more things you have to build, serve, maintain, you have fewer households to distribute that cost, you know, over, and it's just finding that, finding that price point that's, that's right for you all. And just thinking about it, not in, not necessarily what it costs today, but what are people in Capel willing and able to pay for in the future? Because these costs, we can show city over city, or city after city, where these costs do, they don't incrementally go up, they kind of come a little bit, and then they skyrocket when you hit, when a lot of that infrastructure that was built twenty or thirty years ago by developers all comes due. I do think that Capel has done a good job with the, the sales tax and moving some of that money into street funding. Sounds like you guys have raised your utility rates several times in recent years to, to try to keep up on the water and sewer side. So you guys have taken a bigger chunk out of that maintenance backlog than most. What I saw going back fifteen years was, a lot of places, they were doing their budget three, maybe five years out, and they're looking at it, they look at their payment study, payment report, just says, everything's okay, you spend a little bit to keep, you know, keep our roads at a good score, and then all of a sudden, boom, all of this maintenance, you know, roads, water, sewer, parks, a lot of that infrastructure that was built, again, built by developers in the growth phase twenty, thirty years prior, it just hit those cities like a wave, and they had no way to catch up. It was, you know, you couldn't, you could not raise the tax rate enough to, to cover those costs. So we've done a lot of things here with impact fees and other things to, to get in front of some of that with, with new development, but there's still, just understanding that full maintenance obligation in the future is, is important. Mike and Ken, they, they get this stuff, you, you guys have good staff here that, that understand these things, and from what I've seen so far, you've got really good data that you're tracking on these things, too. So thinking forward, what can the city do to align development or redevelopment services and affordability? What does affordability mean to Capel? How many residents are you gonna have? What's the average price point? What's the average price point? That they can afford, tax rates, all that good stuff. We'll do different scenarios and different numbers associated with you to give you guys some different, uh, kind of guardrails, guideposts, uh, to consider as you're going forward. And to show you kind of an example of what the, the end of this looks like, this is one we just, um, recently finished for New Braunfels. You're gonna see stuff like this. We do this, uh, we always do it for property tax, uh, revenue and, and for services are paid from, from property tax. But, uh, here we're also looking at sales tax as well. We can't do the parcel-specific maps for sales tax like we can for property tax for obvious reasons, but we can kind of consolidate some sales tax stuff and show some general takeaways. We can also show that, uh, more for staff and council, it just can't, we can't put that out there, uh, publicly. But we'll show maps like this, this is what we call a, a net revenue per acre. We take the property tax revenue that each parcel in the city actually pays. So after exemptions, all that stuff, what, what revenue you're actually capturing from those, we take the percent of the general fund that's paid from property tax, uh, and we allocate that back to the parcels as well. There's two or three different ways that we do that based on what the, the different services or costs are. And then you get what we, some people call this a, a red-green map. We quit using red and green for colorblind kind of things, but, um, we've played with all kinds of different colors, different, cities want different colors, so we're happy to change it. But basically it's profit and loss. So for every parcel in the city, for the property tax portion, what are they generating in revenue? What are they paying to serve? And is it, is it positive or negative? And then the second level we go to is what if you had what you really needed? Uh, if, if it's unfunded streets, if it's unfunded public safety, libraries, whatever it could be, if we add those costs in, we do this again. Um, and in New Braunfels, this is what it looked like. So this, this was their net per acre based on their current budget, this was their net per acre, what they really needed. So from here, you can start to study what different development patterns hold their value, which ones cost more to serve, which ones make more, all that kind of good stuff. We do a lot of charts, we do a lot of tables that gives you information of by land use, by zoning district, by lot size, um, residential mixed use, all that good stuff. This, uh, this is one that is probably the, the most impactful in most places that we've worked and it kind of gets a little bit counterintuitive, but basically what this is showing you is lot sizes, for residential lot sizes, they're across the bottom, the smallest lots are at the bottom, the larger lots are to, or smaller lots to the left, the, the larger lots to the right. And then those are the, the revenue per acre numbers. So the smallest lots, um, are almost always the most affordable in every city that we've done, um, and they generate the highest revenue per acre. So unpacking this for different lot sizes and zoning criteria that y'all have is something that we're going through right now.
Can I ask a question? So would that be skewed by like high-density, uh, you know, multi-story housing?
Uh, so there's a couple, it's a great question and there's a couple of factors that drive this that we'll unpack in the full report, but there's, there's two really big ones that impact property, uh, tax revenue or taxable value per acre. One is the amount of building on the property. The more, the more building footprint you have on the parcel, the higher your value per acre is gonna be. And the second one's vertical. So the same, the, think about a single-family neighborhood, the easiest way to, that, that I explain it, that, that people can get is if you have a block, street, everything's exactly the same, street, water, sewer, drainage, everything. And you've got properties, you have a one-story house and a two-story house, the two-story house is worth more. That's as simple as it gets. Now you, how vertical you go, um, I don't, in a lot of the, this stuff, I, I, we've never done like the number, like what, how many stories or what do you have to beat it to pencil out? But a, a lot of people think, oh, you're talking denser, you're talking in New York City or you're talking, you know, everything five stories. It's usually two to three stories and things pencil out just fine. And it doesn't have to be across your whole city, it's pockets of strategic density that gets you that mix of housing that folks need, that gets you that extra revenue bump and then things pencil out.
Kevin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're coming to the bottom of the hour.
Yep, um, here you go.
All right.
Last slide. Is it, is it seven?
What's that?
Is it seven?
Seven thirty.
I'm a starstranger, so sooner we, we can, but just real quick for y'all, timeline here, June, July, August, we're finishing the baseline in June. I'm looking at a couple of different development concepts, different types of development that, um, that we're gonna put some numbers to that can help you all, uh, with the, with comp plan, we're gonna refine it with staff and then July we'll be back in here to talk with you all again, present the final results. And then in August, um, have more deep dive with staff and with you all to talk about the final report, talk about anything as it impacts the comprehensive plan. And then if y'all want to, it's in the scope for us to do some kind of a community conversation presentation that talks about this stuff with residents and gets them thinking about it, so you're ahead of it when you get into the comp plan. That's all I got.
That was close.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Wow. All right. Thank you very much.
Think on it, if you do have questions, send them to Mindy and she'll get it back to me.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had one question. We've got an option for our June meeting. We typically cancel the second meeting in June and use that as vacation time, but we also have a budget meeting scheduled that same week.
That Monday.
That Monday, so we've got a budget Monday, budget meeting on Monday and a potential council meeting on Tuesday, which we could cancel, but we still have the budget meeting. So is there a preference?
What date is that?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third. Council meeting will be on the twenty-fourth.
Council meeting, oh, it's been canceled already though, right?
It has not.
Oh.
We'll have to cancel it at the next meeting.
I gotcha, okay. I'm showing it down, I have it on my calendar.
Well, yeah, it's not showing on the master calendar or anything.
So the budget meeting is on twenty-third Monday?
Yes.
And mayor, your, your question is, should be canceled, the Tuesday meeting?
That's what we traditionally cancel that meeting. But you're gonna be here anyway for the Monday meeting.
Okay, I see what it is.
One of the reasons traditionally canceled is because a lot of folks are on vacations who are doing business, it's kind of, if they wanted to participate, if they're out of town.
I've heard about that. I'm good either way.
I'm in town.
Yeah, I'm in town.
I'm in town, I don't leave until that Thursday.
I'm gonna miss the one before that, so I guess I get June off, right?
You gotta be back to the budget meeting.
But if we are gonna do council meeting, we just need to add it to our calendar because you're not seeing it either, right?
No, we're not gonna.
Okay.
We'll get that, we'll add it, we'll get that added.
In fact, I was asking someone about, I was like, wait, we're meeting Monday, about Tuesday, what?
Yeah.
Quick question, are we fifth, fifth Tuesday in July, is that meeting, is there a meeting scheduled that week? It's like the twenty-ninth or something?
That, there is a meeting scheduled, we haven't confirmed or confirmed it up.
Okay, all right.
All right, the time is seven-thirty?
Exactly.
And we're at the end of the work session, we'll get in council chambers for the regular session.
Thirty-five P. M. We're going to move into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance or any of the public hearings must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your home address. This evening, we have Omar Malik with the Islamic Center of Capella here to give our invocation. And then we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and maybe watch the Stars game at the same time. So. So Omar, if you please come forward and everyone, please rise.
Thank you so much, everyone. All praise and gratitude is for God Almighty, Lord of the worlds, the most merciful, the most compassionate. You alone, we seek for help and we worship, guide us to the straight path, the path of those you have blessed, not of those who earn your anger and not of those who went astray. God Almighty, unite our hearts and set right our mutual affairs, guide us to the path of peace, deliver us from darkness into light, and keep us away from hatred and malice. God, choose us to be among those who uphold justice. God Almighty, show us the truth as truth and grant us the ability to follow it and show us falsehood as falsehood and grant us the ability to avoid it and make us among those who are guided by your light. God Almighty, spread peace across the earth, unite the hearts of people upon truth and guidance, remove hatred and hostility, and make us brothers and sisters united in humanity and mercy. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, item number six is, six A is a presentation of the Good Neighbor Award with Ms. Katie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting to you our most recent recipients of the Good Neighbor Award. The Good Neighbor Award is a new program that started in 2024 as a way of recognizing our residents that go above and beyond to help their neighbors. The criteria for this award include the following: you must be a Capella resident; individuals and organizations may only submit one nomination per year; you may not self-nominate; elected officials may not be nominated; and nominees cannot be compensated for the service described within their nomination. We will be recognizing six nominees here tonight. I think three of them are here with us. We will present them a plaque and share a few words their neighbors have to say about them from their nomination form. At this time, I'd like to invite the award recipients to come forward and invite the mayor to come down to present them their plaques. And then after we give you each your plaque, if you'll all just stay up here until the end, and we'll get a group photo with you. So, okay. Okay, sorry about that. All right, our first recipient of the Good Neighbor Award is Aria Goldner. Aria, in your nomination form, your neighbor said you are a kind and thoughtful neighbor who quietly goes about helping and supporting her friends and the neighborhood in any way she can. She is a genuine pleasure to live near. She sincerely welcomes and prefers any and all she meets. Our next recipient is Andy Huckel. Andy's neighbors say he exemplifies the spirit of community and selflessness in the support he provides his neighbors daily. His unwavering dedication to supporting his community in times of need have made a significant impact on the Braywood neighborhood. Congratulations, Andy. Our next recipient is Nancy Lamb. Nancy's neighbors say she is the perfect example of a good neighbor. She is always concerned with Magnolia Park's maintenance and upkeep and the safety and welfare of the people who live here. She knows each neighbor, which includes 114 houses by name and their pets, and always has a smile for them every day. Congratulations, Nancy. All right, and we'll pause here. We'll get a photo of all, okay. I'll be in it too.
We're sliding down. You'll be in the photo. Come on, Mark. Get in here, Mark. Oh, we got cut out. Oh.
Come back, come back. One more one.
I was focused.
We wanted a photobomb.
Okay, we had a few more recipients of this award. They couldn't be here with us tonight, but I'll still recognize them. All right, next recipient is Jackie Checkin. Jackie couldn't be here tonight, but one of her neighbors said that she has always been there to help them. When they moved in, Jackie came over and gave us canned jams, bubblers, and even floaties. She is always chatting with us and offering her help when needed. She's even offered a space to park our car in her garage when there was a hailstorm. Congratulations to Jackie. The next recipient is Dawn McGeehan. One of Dawn's neighbors said Dawn is a very good neighbor. He and his wife Vicki go above and beyond for our family, who they've only known for a few short years. They are a sweet retired couple, and my 10- and 9-year-old kids absolutely love them. My kids will go knock on their door and get a snack from them and play with their two cute kitty cats, Bart and Lisa. It is just a sweet dynamic in our little street, Phillips Drive, and they are a huge reason for that. Congratulations to Dawn. The final recipient is Clifford Pumphrey. Clifford's neighbors say he is the neighborhood watchdog. He pays attention to what's going on and alerts or reminds his neighbors of items that need attention, or in some cases, for those of us who need help, he handles the issue. He is the neighbor everyone should have. Congratulations to Clifford. That concludes our award presentation for tonight. I'll end with sharing that if you know someone who is always extending a helping hand in your neighborhood, we invite you to nominate them for this award. They can go, they can do so by visiting our website, which was listed on the presentation above. And thank you, Mayor and Council, and congratulations to our recipients. You are what make the Capella community so special. Thank you.
And Katie, a big thank you for all the work that you've done to make this program very successful. So, thank you very much. Okay, item six B is a presentation from Tracy Eubanks and Mike Harris on Metrocrest Services.
Just me, Mayor.
Just you.
Just me. I'm Tracy Eubanks, the CEO of Metrocrest Services. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, Mr. Collins. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. Am I hitting a clicker as I go? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to present. Thank you very much for the support that you provided us, and thank you very much for the support you provide all the nonprofits that support Capella residents. You've been very generous with a lot of organizations, and that really improves the lives of so many, and not just Metrocrest Services. I want to talk a little bit about Metrocrest, who we are, some of the challenges that we've seen lately, as well as a funding increase request that you'll be considering as part of your budget process. I'll try to keep up with the slides. So, I'd like to remind you first of why we exist. We serve the communities of Capella, Carrollton, Farmers Branch, Addison, and a portion of the city of Dallas, and our mission is focused on self-sufficiency. While we often start our relationship with a client, providing emergency support such as healthy food, rent support to make sure they stay housed, our goal is to provide everyone a path to ultimately thrive. The colorful image on the right there is our Metrocrest Services 2030 Strategic Plan, which was released in 2023 and is currently in the process of being updated by our board. Its focus is on the interconnectivity of five key areas: nutritious food, housing stability, economic stability, healthcare access, and quality senior center, senior services, excuse me, and all leading to self-sufficiency. And later this year, you hear a little bit more about the updated strategic plan and kind of the next big thing that we believe is for Metrocrest Services. So, a bit about our model. And I will say, in a few minutes, I have a slide that talks about the challenges that we're experiencing as well as most nonprofits today in today's climate. And I've shared this particular slide about challenges a few times the last few weeks, and I've been told it's my Debbie Downer slide. And so, I apologize in advance. So, I want to talk a little bit about what we do, why we do it, and some of the successes before I get to that particular portion of the presentation. We did serve 24,000 individuals this past year. Many of you have been with us for many, many years. Before the pandemic, we were about 10,000 or 12,000 individuals, 24,000 individuals last year. We are unfortunately on pace to serve 28,000 people this year. So, the greater, the greater demand for services that Metrocrest provides, that 28,000 is a 17% increase that we're currently experiencing. And even with the large increase and headwinds that we're beginning to experience, we're still finding ways to make sure we say yes. One of our core values is start with the yes attitude. We're still able to say yes to clients, even though we're seeing the numbers grow at a pretty astonishing rate. We have some amazing people at Metrocrest Services. I have one of the easiest jobs. I feel I get to do this while others have really heavy lifting kind of jobs every day. We believe in providing outstanding customer service to those that walk in our place looking for services. These are our customers. These are our neighbors. We're always looking at improving that. One way we can do that is making sure that when you come in, that you get to see a case manager, social worker, as soon as possible. We've cut that time in half just this fiscal year, this calendar year alone. We're also returning calls. We get a lot of calls, hundreds of calls every day. We're returning all those calls where they leave a message where we don't answer the phone within about an hour now. So, we make sure we give outstanding service. That's really hard to do when there's so many people coming in with such, you know, serious challenges in their life. So, three buckets in terms of our model. One is basic needs, the other is economic stability, and the third is enhancing quality of life, which I'll talk about these very briefly. So, for basic needs, this is our Client Choice Pantry. It's our mobile food pantry. We have a mobile food pantry that's on the road, going to apartment complexes, schools, senior centers, for instance. Both the Client Choice Pantry and the Mobile Food Pantry provide healthy vegetables, access to food for seniors, for children in those apartment complexes, and the key for us is making sure that as high a percentage as possible of the food that we distribute is healthy. And over 90% of the food we distribute in our pantry, the Mobile Food Pantry, is considered healthy food. We provide a lot of rent and utility assistance. As many as 100 families a month, 80 to 100 families a month receive utility assistance or rental assistance from us. We have homeless-specific resources that support our unsheltered neighbors, which we do for Capella as well. Economic stability for us, all about workforce, financial education. That's one-on-one coaching in the areas of how do we budget? How do we create spending plans? How do we improve our chances of finding that perfect job? Kind of rekindle those dreams that people often have when it comes to employment. We have classes now onsite at our new facility in areas of financial education. We have job fairs, hiring fairs. We have things like legal assistance. We partner with Legal Aid of Northwest Texas now. We have job fairs and hiring fairs onsite. We know that a livable wage can be transformative and can have generational impact on a family. And lastly, enhancing quality of life. We do have a healthcare navigator, that's Stephanie in that picture there. She's been with us about a year now, and her job is to help families navigate the healthcare system, to help fill out benefit forms, et cetera, making sure we have good healthcare partners onsite with us, which I'll talk more about in a minute, helping, again, with benefits are so complex nowadays, Medicare, Medicaid, WIC, et cetera. We want to make sure we help with those things. And nutrition education is another area of focus for us. Our strategic plan is not just about distributing food, providing nutritious food. We have a teaching kitchen now where we do cooking demonstrations. We have chefs onsite and other groups that provide education on how to cook healthy food. We have a teaching garden out back. If you've ever been to our place, drive around back, we have a teaching garden. All the plots are adopted by the community and area schools that happen to be within walking distance of Metrocrest. And lastly, senior services. We do deliver hot meals at lunch. We deliver groceries to seniors twice a month. We provide case management. We call, may do wellness calls regularly, help with mobility options, those types of things. Want to make sure that seniors have the opportunity to age in place and do so as healthy as possible. We are launching this weekend our Saks summer hunger program. Some of you volunteered with that in the past. I believe we're over 50 Capella kids. Now, we're receiving food throughout the summer. These are kids in Capella that normally receive a free or reduced price meal during school. So, one of the things I'm excited about, and I feel has been very successful for us, is our community partner program, what I call complementary partners. So, the vision of our new facility, which opened almost two years ago, would be in June, be two years, we wanted to be a gathering place for the community, a place where people that entered, that were often struggling, under a lot of stress, where they felt trusted, where they felt safe, felt welcomed. And we want to make sure that we didn't have just our services, food, rent assistance, job assistance, but also other complementary partners onsite in other areas of key services, critical services of which were needed but that we did not provide. And so, we call this the complementary partner model. These are nonprofits, other service providers onsite with us, or have easy access to us that complement what we're trying to accomplish as it relates to our self-sufficiency model. And I'll talk more about that in just a moment. We've added education and workshops on a variety of topics. This includes classes such as ESL, GED, financial education by area financial institutions. A lot of our banks provide educators. We have health fairs on topics. We just had one recently. We had a caregiver support fair. We had a heart disease, diabetes, and cancer awareness fair very recently as well. And we also partner with nutritionists, as I mentioned, to assist with healthy eating habits. We have master gardeners who pair up with novice gardeners out in our garden. We work with major healthcare networks, such as Parkland Hospital Network. Parkland provides our clients access to their specialty clinics, as well as to specialists such as oncologists and cardiologists. So, we'll make sure that our clients have access to those specialty services that often we take for granted because we have access. Just a sample of some of those partners will quickly, again, we've been open there for two years now. These are all new partnerships for us. We're proud of many of these. I won't call it, cover them all. Metrocare is onsite, providing mental health services. Hope Cottage, nonprofit, provides parenting classes. They give out free diapers, formula, and wipes. Concilio is a nonprofit that has a program called Healthy Kids, Healthy Families, a six-week course mainly for Spanish-speaking families, focused on nutrition education, healthy cooking, fitness education, positive sleep strategies. That's something that I need to go listen in on. wovenhealth, whom you fund, also is one of our partners. They do pop-up clinics at our place. And Dallas College helps provide healthcare certifications as other and other educational opportunities. We also have many other less frequent partnerships, but equally important for us, we have Aspire, which is a nonprofit. They provide ESL training, and they were onsite, their new partner, they're onsite actually today, providing the first ESL class. They had 60, six-zero students. That's the most we've ever had for an ESL class before. So, we're excited about folks that wanting to improve their English skills. The Family Place will be onsite soon, we believe, for domestic violence support, Children's Advocacy Center, PD Place, pediatric care, Smile Magic, which is dental care for kids, Call Your Center, which is hearing, speech, and language disorders, Parkland Homes Van, which is direct healthcare delivery to homeless individuals on the streets, which we're excited about that partnership. And then American Heart Association, they provide CPR and first aid kits. And we've aligned our nutrition policy with the policies and the standards of the American Heart Association as it relates to our pantry and our nutritious initiatives. So, before I jump into those challenges I was telling you about, I want to talk about the number of Capella residents served. In 2023-24, we've served 742 Capella residents. When we presented this time last year, we thought we would serve about 838, which would be a 13% increase. We're on pace to serve about 862, so a 16% increase, which is in line with what we're seeing overall as an agency. For the 25-26 proposal that you have in your hands or that's been submitted to the city staff, we went back, we assumed a 4% increase. And the fact is, with the economic uncertainty in front of us right now, it is highly unpredictable. If we did see another 16% increase, we'd serve about 1,000 Capella residents in fiscal year 25-26, beginning in October through September of 2026. Okay, so, this is the portion I warned you about. So, I apologize, but I want to make sure that we share some of the challenges that we're facing, and not just us, but the nonprofit sector overall. And some of you may have already heard my spiel. So, a few areas I want to touch on. First is federal funding. Since January, the federal government has cut or eliminated funding for many programs to support those who are struggling economically or with health-related issues or have specific needs, such as domestic violence, there may be human trafficking type issues, it could be any niche type nonprofit, drug abuse, substance abuse, that type of thing. So, we're seeing funding cuts there. And this funding is typically provided to private nonprofits like us, who administer a specific program or set of programs. And while federal dollars received by Metrocrest is less than 5% of our budget, so we decided years ago, we would not be dependent on the federal government. So, we've never had much in federal funds, and it's well less than 5% now. So, we're excited about that. However, many nonprofits rely on the feds for up to 70, seven zero, 70% of their budget. So, as those federal funding cuts happen, happened swiftly, we have a lot of nonprofits that are already laying off staff, curtailing services, even looking at shutting down. So, there's going to be a ripple effect across the industry. And while we're only four months plus into these changes, we do expect this to continue. We don't see a major change that would improve the situation. The biggest concern that we have, and anybody with a pantry is going to have, is the reduction of funds at the North Texas Food Bank. They provide 90% of the food that we distribute. And while we don't want to be reliant on one particular source, in the food pantry business, you are reliant on one particular source, your food bank in your community. So, 90% of the food we get is from the North Texas Food Bank. We know that they're projected to lose $9 million of USDA funding. We don't know exactly the impact on us, but we do believe that we could lose as much as a million pounds of food out of a $5 million budget. So, next year, we believe we'll distribute $5 million pounds of food. We could lose 20% of that based on what we're currently hearing. There's not a whole lot of facts yet. We're having to do a lot of digging to make sure we understand the ramifications, but we know it's significant. That loss of a million pounds is over a million and a half dollars' worth of value. So, we're having to watch that very closely. So, while we don't receive federal funds, we know that that is our one place of exposure is we're so reliable on North Texas Food Bank. We do pick up from grocery stores every day. We do get food from the community. However, it just doesn't add up to enough. When you're distributing 16,000 pounds of food every day like we are, it just takes a lot to catch up. We're also just seeing an overall downturn in donations, non-government donations. My peers are seeing the same thing. We're talking a lot about this. Non-government donations would be foundations, which would be grants that we write. It'd be individual gifts from people like yourself, individually, corporate support. Our fiscal year, same as your fiscal year, so our Q1 was right on pace, so through October through December, right on pace. Since January, January through about a week ago, we have a 20% decline in those non-government donations. That's about 350K that we're short right now. And if you get emails from me, you know that we're kind of persistent. It's not as though we're not looking for new options, but we're seeing a pretty significant decline. Our individual donors are telling us a little bit hesitant about giving right now. Our corporate folks are saying they're pulling back on their budget, and it's something that we're all experiencing in the nonprofit sector from what I can gather. Certainly, our peers in the human services are experiencing it. Had coffee this morning with one, and they are really struggling on how they're going to balance their budget for next year. So, just something we're all experiencing. I want to make sure you're aware of that. And one item, not on the slide, is there's a significant risk of reduction in what's called SNAP or food stamp benefits. The U.S. Department of Agriculture, I think, is required to cut their budget by about $230 billion, and we know that SNAP will be a big component of that cut. And so, that would be pretty significant for the people that we serve to have the perfect storm of less SNAP benefits and less food in the food pantry. So, I warned you about the Debbie Downer part of this. So, our goal, though, is to make sure there's no disruption in services. We've gone through recessions. We've gone through a pandemic. We've always found a way, and I'm here today in front of you because I want to make sure we get ahead of it. So, we are developing some things that we are doing to take action. We're developing new donor strategies with a focus first on basic needs, making sure people stay housed, making sure they stay fed. In a few weeks, you will probably receive, if you're on my email list, information about a new campaign called Stock the Shelves, where we're trying to get a head start on how do we backfill the empty shelves with donated food or funds for us to go purchase food. Again, we want to get a head start on that prospective food gap. We're also maximizing the performance of a resale store. Many of you have shopped our resale store. Resale stores are fantastic in a crisis. And so, store's doing quite well. We love for you to shop, love for you to donate. That's an opportunity for us to generate income that we can use to help stock the shelves. We're also trying to be very responsible scrubbing our expenses, looking at everything that we spend money on. We are, we have a hiring freeze currently, trying to reevaluate staff policy, staff strategy. We're using reserve funds to cover our shortfall. Thankfully, we did create emergency funds years ago that we've maintained that allows us to not have to curtail services at this point. And lastly, we're asking our city partners, like yourself, like I am today, to consider an increase for fiscal year 25-26 to kind of assist us through this transition period. So, there's a history of the requests, which was also in the packet that we submitted to staff. As you see, that this year, we're asking for a pretty significant increase. We don't like asking for an increase. We would prefer to continue our policy, which is asking you to be a partner, a funding partner, but put the responsibility for raising the bulk of the funds on us. So, if you provided us 30 cents on the dollar of what we spend, our objective is to raise there 70%. We've always been able to maintain that model. That model's a little bit at risk at the moment, which is, again, why I'm here today. We felt like waiting longer would be a mistake for us. So, again, it's a $61,625 increase for next fiscal year. We think that will allow us to continue services regardless of where the numbers look for Capella, while we kind of work through initiatives to help us weather this crisis. We want to this crisis. We want to serve more Capel residents as they need, ensure healthy food is available in our pantry, continue to provide housing support as prices do go up on housing. Unfortunately, we're seeing more layoffs currently. And it gives us an opportunity to create a new plan and navigate external factors, which we believe will not abate, at least for this calendar year. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to share the challenges that we're experiencing and deal with my Debbie Downer news. You know, we all watching the same, we're all on the same news cycle, but I'm amazed how there are so many people that don't really understand the connection between federal funding cuts and the impact on people that are struggling and nonprofits who provide them services. And so it hit us really hard. Probably took us about 30 days to realize what a significant impact that was going to have. So again, very appreciative of the support you provided us. Thank you for your consideration and all your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Council, do you have any questions for Tracy? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tracy, for being here. Great presentation. I see that you brought your team with you. If you want to introduce to the council.
Yes, I will. I have, you have to stand, Calvin Moore, our chief operating officer, who says he's been here almost nine months. As a sales guy says, he's been here almost a year, right? And then Akita Hobbs and her daughter. Akita's on our board. Akita's our board secretary. And as I always say, board secretaries, every time they say they're willing to re-up for another year, it's just amazing. Because she takes amazing notes for us. So thank you, Akita, for coming. Thank you, Bijou.
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Bijou, for being a great liaison. We appreciate you year after year. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you for your service to Metrocrest, and thank you for providing services to the Capel residents and the kids during the summertime. You mentioned about reduce grants from the federal government. That may impact Metrocrest, although you are not receiving much from the federal. But people from other organizations may come to Metrocrest for the services. What's your anticipating numbers this year if that happens?
So again, it's a moving target. So again, we are enrolling 12 of serving 28,000 individuals versus 24,000 the previous year. We believe we'll serve over 30,000 if this current pace continues. We haven't served over 30,000 individuals until the height of the, since the height of the pandemic. And so what you're referring to is, as other nonprofits begin to hopefully not close, but have layoffs and maybe cut hours possibly, there could be pantries. We're one of the largest pantries in the region. So it's unlikely, if there's food available, it's unlikely that we will not receive some of that food. Smaller pantries like pantries in a church, pantries at a school, might have to shut down temporarily. Those families will ultimately be coming to us for sure. And we, I've already been asked by nonprofits if they could office at our place, because they're going to possibly lose their fixed space.
So I would, I did want to let you know that Bijou has been reappointed or reassigned to the light sun for another year. So you'll get to see this.
That's great news, yeah.
Councilmember Pramkumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy and the management team, thank you for the wonderful job that you all do. And Bijou, thank you for being the liaison. You know, it's really unfortunate that you are where you are. And I think the following year is not going to be a stellar year either. I just want to reach out to the Capel residents that are listening and watching, and to say to them that's about 1,000 of our residents and neighbors and friends are being served by Metrocrest. It's approximate cost is about $200 per person. I think that's a low price for the dignity of our neighbors and friends. I hope all of you are supportive in whatever decision we make today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. It may sound like a dogpile, but I'd sort of want to echo what they're, what they're saying. We really appreciate what you do, not only for the City of Capel, but for the whole Metrocrest area, for all the cities and everything. And this is a great example of you've taken this disruption that has gone on at the federal level and has trickled down everything. But you and Calvin and Akita and the rest of the staff and the rest of the board have continued to stay focused on the main thing. And that's what I really appreciate that you do. You do a lot for the city, for the residents of Capel that the City of Capel could not do if it was not for you. You are much better at it than we are, and we love partnering with you. So appreciate very much all that y'all, all that y'all do and provide for this whole area. Thank you.
Considering the time we're in, that kind of dogpiling will work every day for me.
Councilmember Heena House Smith.
Tracy, always good to see you and your team, and really appreciate you being here. I think it's always, I always enjoy listening to your report, because you tell us how it is. And I think that's really important. You and your staff and your team have, have to weather some really difficult storms over the years. And it continues, but you've always done it in a, gosh, in just a way where you don't compromise what you do at the core of Metrocrest in making sure that people in need, whatever that need may look like, continue to be served. And so thank you for that. Thank you for being creative. Thank you for being willing to ask the hard questions and ask for more when more is needed. And thank you for serving so many people across the board, because everybody goes through challenging times, and it looks different for everybody. And the fact is, they always have a place at Metrocrest. And I know that we love going and serving when we can, and Christmas is a time in particular. And again, I just, I love what you do, and I really appreciate you sharing where you're at and how we can be of support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Item number seven on our agenda is a citizen's appearance, and persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks shall be made by any speaker against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have a number of people that have signed up to speak tonight, and the first one on the list Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Dave Schaff. I reside at 215 West Wind Drive in Capel. Mayor, city management, and council members. My topic again is free speech. I believe my topic is very pertinent, serious, and reflects directly on how the city conducts business and interacts with its citizens and the community at large. As you all know, I do not believe this citizen's appearance venue should be allowed to continue at stage for self-indulgent idiocy and nonsensical irrelevant topics such as happened again on May 13th, that are not within the spectrum of the city's legitimate and important business needs and/or concerns. However, unlike some recent speakers, I do respect the time of the officials and citizens of this community, and do not think this quote-unquote "right to free speech" should be willfully abused and perverted. Yesterday, on Memorial Day, we remembered and celebrated the lives of those who gave their all for this country. We should never forget what has been earned by others for our freedoms. We should cherish and respect those freedoms and not dishonor those sacrificed by misusing or perverting the intrinsic value and fundamental meaning of freedom. Therefore, I conclude by just stating that my presence alone, again at this podium, demonstrates my position very clearly. Please do not continue to equivocate on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. The second speaker on our list is And as you're walking down, name an address for the record, please.
Tammy Rice, 233 South Hertz. And I want to talk to you tonight about experience. I know that the city has put a lot of focus on experiences, and I want you to know about an experience I had. So the senior center is just a wonderful gym. And I've gotten much more involved in it. And I just want you to know that one of the experiences happened was Mother's Day. And they did a fantastic job. All of the leaders at the senior center came to the art center and carried all the stuff over. And then you had the art center people that were helping. And it was just a beautiful recognition, and it was just a great time. And I think that the senior center, obviously, everyone wants more, and you only have so many things you can do. But I just think the experience was great. I'm on the volunteer committee, the program committee, and I've had a great experience with the leadership as well. I go and say, hey, I'd like to do this. And instead of saying yes, but, or no, they say yes, and. So I just feel like that's, shows the experience that they want to bring to our senior center. And I am a frequent flyer at the senior center. I'm usually there five days a week, getting my free tea and bagel. But my husband and I have started to make friends. I noticed on one of the slides that it talked about how when you're a working person outside of Capel, we had a space where we had our kids grown, and we didn't have a community, because we were all working out. Now that we have the senior center, we're making friends at this phase of our lives, a different set of friends. And so I just think that that's another thing, that's an experience I've had. And I just wanted to use my time to share some positivity about my experiences. And we appreciate all the support. I know that you all come and come to the, give us updates and things like that, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The next speaker is Dr. Jack Henderson. And while you're making your way to the podium, name an address for the record, please.
Dr. Jack Henderson, 617 Pheasant Lane. To the mayor, pro tem, council, deputy city manager, I am here tonight requesting the return of Breakfast with the Candidates. Breakfast with the Candidates was overlooked, even though it was scheduled for this local election cycle for 2025, in 2025. Senior citizens who are residents and taxpayers want to hear what candidates have to say. Please ensure, please, that Breakfast with the Candidates returns for the 2026 cycle. Dr. Jack Henderson, 617 Pheasant Lane.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The next speaker on the list is Mr. Alex Stein. While you're making your way to the podium, name an address for the record, please.
Come on, Mayor. You know who I am. Primetime 99 Alex Stein, Pimp on a Blimp, 7509 Inwood Road. It's always a pleasure to be here. I just want to say thank you, guys. You know, Capel is a very white city. And I like white people. White people are pretty nice. You know, they are, you know, pretty docile compared to some other people. But what I'm worried about is in this new conservative administration, is that we are prioritizing deporting illegal immigrants. And while, you know, the idea of kicking out gangbangers from Venezuela sounds good. The problem is, is not all the people from Venezuela are gangbangers. Some of them are big booty Latinas. And a big booty Latina is not a threat to my lifestyle here in Capel. So what I would like, Mayor, I would like it if we could create some sort of legislation in the city that would be a sanctuary city strictly for big booty Latinas. We don't need sanctuary for the men. If you're overweight Hispanic guy, you can get out of here, go back to your hometown, whatever, really don't need you. But if you're a beautiful lady, I don't know why we need to penalize them, because what are they going to do? You know, be a hot lady? I mean, there's no crime in that. As a matter of fact, I would argue that that would make the landscape in Capel more beautiful by letting the big booty Latina stay. So I wrote a little song for you guys that I'm going to sing. So if you guys can just, this is for you guys. There's no big booty Latinas here, though. I'm looking around. There's not one Hispanic lady in this whole place. So this goes out to the Hispanic ladies that are watching right now. I know you guys are out there. So I just want you to know that I'm here to protect you guys. Let's go, Capel. It's primetime, number 99, and I'm gonna grind. Big booty Latinas always on my mind. If you're a nine, you are really fine. I'm primetime, Alex freaking style. Let me say it one more motherfreaking time. Big booty Latinas, get to Stan Capel. All the rest belong in jail. If you're an illegal, get the hell out. Big booty Latinas get to stand no doubt. They are so pretty. They look good in a dress. They clean up your house. They'll do it the best. They clean slow play with their small little hands. They don't got a place to hide, though, they live. Venezuela, in the country, they get free, they pay. They need the thorn that's planted with Brazil. If you're on OnlyFans, you need to chill. I love Latinas. I love you so much. And big booty Latinas, let them stay in charge. Don't freak out, cause I'm not a show. Big booty Latinas, guys, let them stay. If you don't agree, you are gay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Primetime 99 Alex Stein. And, you know, follow me on Instagram. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Amanda Rodriguez. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Armando, I'm sorry. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Armando Rodriguez. I live down at the Dallas Immigration Center. Reason I'm here today is to express my experience being in America. Obviously, I heard this gentleman right before me. What this man believes is slightly not true. Not all Latinas have big booties, but it's okay. Some of us tend to have the big booty. Sorry, it's my first time ever doing something like this. I've, first time being in Capel, Cuba, where I come from, actually doesn't have anything as nice as this. So the reason I'm here, council, is actually because, well, you don't have a lot of Latino restaurants, but on top of that, my experience being in America's been pretty weird. Came into America through Eagles Pass here in Texas. I got trafficked in a cyber truck all the way to Los Angeles. I was kind of curious about when I'd make it to Los Angeles, but it took like three days, because something about like people were protesting about the electricity going on. And, well, I made it to Los Angeles. I had no way to make money. Started panhandling, got approached by a couple weird people, AKA the gays. Then while in Los Angeles, became a DoorDash driver. While being a DoorDash driver, I had an order for a crazy, it was like a $3,000 tip. And I was like, wow, I'm finally going to have a place to live. Well, I ended up being a DoorDash order for Pete Diddy, and it was like 5,000 bottles of baby oil, something Johnson and something. Well, I delivered the baby oil, thinking, wow, $3,000 tip. Turned out, they told me, in order for me to get to 3,000, I'd have to do something. I was like, dude, I don't know what it is, but, you know, you Americans believe customers always right. Es su tarado, ite. And, well, I got touched. And while I was touched by Pete Diddy, I, I was kind of nervous, and I couldn't help but notice that they were watching a Kaisa Nat stream in the background. And I don't know who that was. But I kind of became motivated, become a live streamer, and I just wanted to be a part of Kaisa Nat Stream University. But I got turned away because I was white. So that kind of scared me. They didn't even give me a chance to tell them that I was Cuban. Well, after that, well, I started brain rot scrolling on Instagram, came across this woman named Jasmine Crockett. I don't know if you guys know who she is. Basically, the reason I'm here is because I believe all you white Americans owe me not only reparations, but also owe me for being in your country and making it better and doing the jobs that you guys don't even want to do, because you're too busy watching Instagram. And yeah, I might have good English, but, you know, I took a couple of Ingles in Barra classes. So if I could just say a message, I'd ask Trump, please lower the tariffs. I'm trying to stop Fentanyl out here, but it's kind of hard. I have no way to make it. And these tariffs are fricking killing me, dude. So please help me out, Cash App, Mondo Arrow. Thank you.
Sir.
Our next speaker is Mercedes Hall. Name an address for the record, please.
Mercedes Hall, 483 Grace Lane, Capel. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the City of Capel. Mercedes Hall, I'm Capel Kiwanis Club new chartering president, and I work from home. I'm in digital marketing, and I don't currently have a car. I'm in the process of building a new business, and I'm focused on that. And I'm really excited about the new Dart Rel coming in. I did attend the working session, and I want to express my enthusiasm for the Dart Rel. I want to encourage the city and the... I want to encourage the city and the residents of the city to embrace it and not think of it as, oh, gosh, there's going to be outside people coming in. Look at it as the opportunity for even those that do work from home, or I have friends that live in Capel that are, they have difficulty driving at night because of vision, or they're just, the predictability of the timing with Dart rails. I did move from other cities that have a very effective rail system, and it provides for a lot of predictability. I did live in Dallas 2003 to 2012. I've just returned eight months ago, and the traffic explosion is incredible, and it limits being able to get to events for networking, for attending business events, and also friends across the other side of the city that they don't want to, you know, I'd love to see that they'd want to come out to have dinner with me out at, you know, San Danieli. There are different places here in Capel, but they don't want to deal with the traffic. To have an effective rail system provides predictability, and I want to just encourage the city, as you're considering the planning, to, I don't know what else been built out, but consider the fact that some of us are digital nomads in essence of being able to work from anywhere, so that they're making sure that there is coverage for, to protect from the elements, that there is seating, because I'm on Zoom calls all day, and, you know, just to make it a commuter, commuter accessible environment, and, you know, the safety and the lighting and the accessibility for people with disabilities. So, I just want to just thank the city that allowing the Dart rail is coming through, hopefully sooner than later, because I know sometimes there's delays, but to please consider that, just to really make it world-class working, you know, commuters' capability as well as to enable those in other parts of the city to, the metroplex, to enjoy this beautiful city for the great opportunities that there are here. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. I do believe that we have one request from Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I would ask that item H be pulled from the consent agenda.
All right, thank you very much. In that case, we'll be considering consent agenda items A through G. Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments on items B, C, and D.
Do you wish to pull those from the agenda?
No, sir.
Go ahead.
So, for the benefit of the folks listening in, item number B is the ramp, the right turning ramp from Highway 121 into Eastlake. I spoke with the HOA of both Eastlake and West Haven. Both of them are supportive of this. The West Haven folks felt they also needed a turning lane, but, but, right now, they're happy with Eastlake getting it. On item C, the total cost was actually approved by the city council earlier on, and this is one of the costs of making sure that our stewards are functional and we do the preventive maintenance in time. And that's pretty much all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nevils.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, seconding. All in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosa, Smith, Carol, Nevils, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
All right, I'd like to ask Vanessa to come forward, and we're going to consider item H. Our Sheri or whoever is available. Consider approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 0.10996.3, amending the master fee schedule for the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery. Fee details, donation receptacles, and the village collection, collective fees, and authorizing the mayor to sign. You guys want to give us a real short critique on this one?
Sure. So, two of these items have, or I guess all the items have already been brought forth to council. The receptacle bins being a resolution that was brought to council, so that's just truing up the master fee schedule to the resolution. Same with the village concept, or the village collective. It was brought to council, and the resolution is just truing up what council's actions are. And same with the cemetery as well. And for questions on the cemetery, we have Ms. Sherri Belmont, the Assistant Director of Community Experiences, to answer any of y'all's questions.
Councilmember Walker, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Yes, Mayor.
Or, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. This time, I would move that we approve item H as written, with one change, that being that we would increase the non-resident fee for a single plot to $10,000 from what is currently written in the ordinance as proposed for Rolling Oaks Memorial Center.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Carol. That's getting hard to say. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosa, Smith, Carol, Nevils, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Item number nine is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and consider approval of a resolution granting a variance of 20 feet to the Silk Road Indian Cuisine and Bar from the 300-foot prohibited requirement for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, with the business address being 160 West Sandy Lake Road, Suite 100, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Steer.
Mayor, council, good evening. The item before you tonight is a public hearing to request a 20-foot distance variance for the Silk Road Indian Cuisine and Bar for on-premise consumption of mixed beverages with a food and beverage certificate. Section 616.3 of the city's Code of Ordinances prohibits the sale of alcohol within 300 feet of a church, public school, or private school. The new restaurant will be located at 160 West Sandy Lake Road, Suite 100. Capel Monastery Academy, located at 136 Fitness Court, is located 280 feet away from the location, thus the need for a distance variance. The red 300-foot buffer distance is measured from the blue parcel boundaries that house the restaurant. The Capel Monastery parcel is also outlined in blue. Public hearing notices were placed in the Irving Rambler newspaper on May 17, 2025, and May 24, 2025. As of today, the city secretary office has not received any feedback. While the Silk Road is a new tenant, a variance was granted for the previous tenant, J.C.'s Burger Bar, and also for Hemway Brunch, San Daniel, and Anamias, located in the same shopping center. This tenant will have the same hours of operation as J.C. Burger Bar, which were 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. The request before you tonight is one step in a process of owner, that the ownership must complete to receive their TABC license to sell mixed beverages. Section 616.4 of the Code of Ordinances gives council discretion to allow for the variance as presented, and that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm in favor of the, to move forward with this, but I do have one clarification. So, it's, what's the restriction? 300 feet from the monastery? Because I also saw something about 10,000, I mean, 1,000 feet from the high school. Is that a separate?
That's a separate, yeah.
So, that one we're also, we're also approving that one also, correct?
No, that's not on your agenda.
Oh, okay.
It's a different requirement.
Okay, so the only one we're doing, even though it's within 1,000 feet, it's like, it's a 20-feet variance also on that one.
Yeah, the TABC administers that 1,000-foot requirement. So, if they're within 1,000 feet of the school, they have to take that up with TABC.
Okay.
Our local option is only 300 feet.
Okay, so all we're concerned about is the 300 feet.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to point a clarification, because I'd seen that in the memo. Thanks.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Point of clarification, operating hours are the same, or is it different from the previous tenant?
Those are the same, but that's not part of this request, but it was just more for information.
I see, thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm excited to see the Silk Road Indian Cuisine and Bar willing to move into that space to set up so quickly after we lost J.C. Burgers. We had the same variance allowed for the predecessor tenant. I assume no reason that this tenant should receive any different treatment, and I hope that whole strip succeeds greatly.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to close the public hearing number nine and move to approve as requested.
All right. Oh, I've got three seconds. Councilmember Hill, a second. Any discussion? Since we've already been doing, Councilmember Nevils.
Is there anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No, there was, I'm sorry. There was nobody signed up for the public hearing, so I just skipped that one. So, sorry about that.
I thought I would double-check, Mayor. Thank you.
That's a good Mayor Pro Tem, ex-Mayor Pro Tem.
Where you at? Where you at?
All right, so we're getting a little bit off topic. We do have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosa, Smith, Carol, Nevils, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is the city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Thank you, Mayor. Magnolia Park Trail, the contractor is continuing to install the upper gabion basket and the gabion basket mattress between the upper and lower gabions. Fire Station Number 5, the contractor is installing the interior finishes, appliances, and technology. Service Center Project, contractor has poured the slab, and the framework for the storm shelter is in place. Tech Stop Project at Belt Line, this is the bridge over IH 635. The Tech Stop's contractor is currently working on the sidewalks across the bridge with the outside lanes to be remaining closed. This work is expected to continue for another four to six weeks. It is on schedule and is expected to be completed in August. Veterans Plaza, the contractor has now installed erosion control, has set up construction fencing, worked on tree removal, and began stripping the grass from the work areas. Electrical and irrigation installations will begin this week. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Number, item number 11 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Dart is continuing to work on their punch list at all the railroad crossings. We had a very good discussion on the Dart progress, and if I'm remembering correctly, they are expecting to be in revenue generation at the end of this year or at the very beginning of next year. Just a note, Senate Bill 1277, which was reauthorizing Capel's road maintenance tax to a 10-year basis, was defended and promoted very handily by Mayor Pro Tem Don Carroll and Assistant City Manager Kent Collins down in Austin. Thank you very much. And for the first time in five legislative sessions, we made it out of the House Ways and Means Committee, made it to Calenders Committee, made it out of Calenders, and died on the House floor due to lack of time. So, we will be back next year with that one, but thank you very much, guys, for doing that. The Mayor Pro Tem had a very busy first week in office, so it was well-deserved. On Sunday, we had the COR's 25th anniversary celebration and had a very, very, I didn't count everybody that was there, but there was a large contingent of folks that were there. I'd like to thank the members of the council that were there. Councilmember Prem Kumar, Councilmember Nevils, and Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith, and had a very, very nice history lesson from former Mayor Candy Sheehan. So, it was a very nice kind of history on how the COR came to be. And a council, former, Councilmember Greg Garcia was there as well, so he was part of the council that originally voted to approve the COR, which was then known as the Capel Recreation and Aquatic Center. So, let's see, on tomorrow, we have Dr. Hunt's retirement at the CHS Library at 4:30. We will be presenting a proclamation to Dr. Hunt at that time, and as far as I know, the council is invited and public is welcome to attend. And for those of you that may have missed it, we do have a new member at the diocese this evening. We'd like to welcome back Crystal Tristan. I'm having trouble with the last name, but Crystal is back with us. She is filling in temporarily until a permanent city secretary is hired, and in case you don't recognize, she spent 16 years in that chair. Okay, well, and as she was getting ready for this, the meeting tonight, she made the comment, this is really complicated. So, Crystal, thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's nice to have you back with us. Item number 12 is council committee reports concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Council, any items to present? Seeing none there. Item next is a report on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition with Mayor Pro Tem Don Carroll.
Thank you very much. I do not have an extensive report out tonight because the legislation, legislative session has been ongoing and things change very quickly at this point. I intend in my next report out to give sort of a summary on the things that happen transportation-related. I will say that there has been nothing extreme on the transportation front that has happened. There have been a few things that have hurt slightly and a few things that have helped slightly, but nothing overly extreme as far as transportation is concerned this time. So, but I'll have a further report out next quarter. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 13 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Do we have any public service announcements? Councilmember Nevils?
Just very quickly, I think I might have missed it, but I just wanted to let you know that we're having a visit to the Senior Center, so any council members, tomorrow we're visiting, so if any council members would like to attend, I know Councilmember Prem Kumar typically joins, but love to have any other guests come and join us at the Senior Center for our report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 14, there is no necessary action from the executive session, so therefore there being no further action before this council. We are adjourned at 8:39 p.m.